All right, welcome everyone to our Wednesday, July 12th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting. First off, before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on ancestral unceded territory of the Pastunamikabes people. I need, to get things rolling, I need a mover and second to approve the agenda.
I'll move second.
Counselor Greenlaw, Counselor Heisler, any questions? All those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Away we go. All right, so... Any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none? All right, no complications. Okay, so we have Future St. Stephen's Strategic Plan Update.
May I use your name?
Yes.
Thank you, worship. Unfortunately, Mr. Williams was unexpectedly required to stay in, I believe it's Moncton, and wasn't able to get back for this meeting. But one of the things that was in, that we discussed at the strategic planning sessions, was getting an updated strategic plan from Future St. Stephen, and the target timeline was July. So, kudos to Mr. Williams and his team. They hit their mark on our, on our plan. He will be joining us at a future meeting, so we can either, you can table this to discuss with him directly, or you can, you know, provide questions to me and I can bring them to his attention afterwards. But we did want, he did want to make sure that it was in your hands by the agreed-upon deadline, so that's why it's on your package.
What's the feeling, we're not voting here, but what's the feeling, counsel?
I'd say we should table it.
Table it and, and bring it up on our next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One is here.
Yep. Okay, next up, we got Strategic Priorities Update. And, let's see, I'm gonna make it bigger. You've all seen the report. Okay, so Jeff, do you want to start it off?
Thank you, worship. I had previously, last council said we gave an update at this meeting on the strategic planning stuff, mainly focusing on what was in the now and the next boxes, because that's what we've been working on for the most part. So as noted, the Future St. Stephen strategic plan is nearly complete. Once you guys have a chance to talk to Mr. Williams about it. The bylaw review, we're doing that at council meetings, and we're trying not to overwhelm you with hundreds of thousands of pages of reading at each meeting, but we are throwing a few every meeting at that to get through that process. There's some bigger ones coming, I will give you a heads-up one, but that is going well. So the community safety options in our strategic plan was the, I believe, was satisfied by the report that went to last council. So that part was done, but again, as notes in the report, a new, a new task, which was the committee terms of reference was created. Further discussion on that later on today's agenda. The unhoused options, we wanted to have a meeting with the Unsheltered Population Working Group. Not sure if, if in the opinion of this committee, if the presentation by Mr. Thiessen satisfied that requirement, or if there's another meeting that you would like us to, to set up with them. So we're just looking for clarification on, on what you would like to do on that. Social Housing Forum Design, we have not quite started that one yet, so that's ongoing. The other ones I wanted to bring to attention were in the end, next column, because some of them actually have been, have been addressed. Border Arena Options, we did provide councils through an email, the report of the ad hoc committee that looked into that facility. And since you've received that report, we've had, as we continue to do, we talked to a number of developers that have seen, shown some interest in the site, and we've been looking at our own ideas around what could be possibly done with that facility. So I suspect in the near future, it's a council meeting, there may be a few options brought forward for you to identify your preferred ones to, to pursue in more depth, but that is an ongoing process. The Service Capacity Review Terms of Reference, that was presented at last council. Council elected to give us permission to advertise for a couple of positions, those advertisements are out currently, and we're hoping that the recruitment is successful. And then we're moving a few things up into the now category, or we're suggesting we do, which is the industrial park planning, the hotel options, and the Tourism Strategy Action Plan, which now we'll be able to shift some of our attention to those matters, having taken care of some of the ones on the top end. So realistically, out of this report, I think the winning from this committee is really the clarification around the unhoused, you know, Unsheltered Working Group, Unsheltered Working Group, and whether this committee wishes to have a, a separate meeting with, with that working group, to have more in-depth conversation than was done at the last council meeting.
What do you guys think, counsel?
So, the unhoused committee, the last time, or the Unsheltered Committee last time asked if they, if we wanted their help with this particular issue, right? And I think they were looking for approval from us to say we were going to engage them and say, yes, we want you to handle the, the unsheltered situation for us kind of thing. Is that, is that what we're actually deciding on here? That's, that's what I took their presentation to.
That was, I'm sure that was part of their, their presentation, but at our strategic planning session, it was identified that we probably, or that council, there seemed to be a desire to get a little bit more understanding what was going on at that table, and some of their plans and projects, and, you know, we had a presentation on a bit of that, but whether there's more dialogue, and, and, I mean, it might be advisable to have that conversation if, because it might be something to do with them, and the, the Public Safety Committee that's also on our agenda tonight, to discuss a bit more, and so you have those two things, and then we have budget coming. And so, a meeting with, with them and their hopes and dreams and goals might be appropriate to have prior to the initial budget discussions kicking off, which I will be sending you guys a calendar for probably tomorrow, but, so yeah, that's, it might be, it might be advantageous to have that conversation prior to, prior to those budget discussions.
Okay, any more from else, Counsel Harding?
Oops. Are you seeing that they're going to be asking us for money? Is that why we have to wait for the budget?
I don't know what their ask, what their ask is going to be, but I suspect that, you know, there, there may be costs, or has been in the past, and lots of groups ask us for lots of things that we have to weigh against other things in our budget, and sometimes it's good to know those in advance of budget rather than getting surprised halfway through the process.
Okay, yep. All right, any further discussion, counsel? Joyce, or Counsel Wright?
Thank you, yes. I'm definitely thinking we should have that conversation a little more in-depth, because before we know it, the cool season will be here, and then the cold season, and we don't want to be left in a position like we happened last year where we're scrambling, so if we know that there's been conversations with government partners and things taking place, I don't know if there is or isn't, but if, if we're, if we have another conversation to see if any preliminary plans have been laid, it would definitely keep us in a better position to decide what the role should be of the municipal district.
All right, so from what I'm seeing, I think we, you know, we at least could have those discussions, because there's nothing, like, I think what you're alluding to is we don't want to be held under the gun in, in, in a rush, so if we can have a more, you know, more time to speak, and more time to talk things, and negotiate. Okay. Counsel Rotis?
Yeah, I think one positive thing about that group is there's already a, a large number of community partners sitting at that table, representatives from Charlotte County Hospital, Addictions and Mental Health, Project Village Housing. There are also a lot of people who have significant experience applying for MB housing, and they know the application process when it comes to social development, because that warming center was funded by the province of New Brunswick through social development. So, I think if they already know those channels and, and the ways to navigate kind of the housing piece, that that's what we should use them to our advantage for, and then we did have Public Safety sat on that committee, and Scott McKenzie sat on that committee, so, I mean, they kind of got some insight into all of the complexities of the issues, and I think that if there, if there are people that are focused on the community safety aspect that are already sitting on that working group, maybe they would consider kind of transitioning over to our community safety group, and then the rest of them could continue to focus on housing, because I know we can't focus on housing. So yeah, just a thought.
Okay, so I guess we'll leave it at that, we'll entertain a meeting in the coming future. Thanks, counsel. All right. Hmm? Oh, coming up, you mean, yeah. Oh.
On the strategic update?
Oh, you got any more, Jeff?
He has a question.
Oh, you do? Sorry! All right, just to say I want to have a question. All right, I thought we were missing something, go ahead.
On, on the last one, the tourism strategy, the action plan, you're saying that, that it's currently underway, planning's currently underway, so who's actually working on that? And, like, is it Future St. Stephen? Is it us? Is it?
Yeah. So that's kind of organized, coordinated through the Regional Services Commission. So Sherri Stewart, who's based in St. Stephen, she's been working with the Strategic Planning Group, I think Deputy Mayor Wheaton attended a meeting in person on that, I was on that through Zoom, and then once we kind of worked with them coordinating the meetings, we haven't got any lined up, I think, just with the summer, but it's, it's coordinated through the, the RSC, so.
I took their role a little different, so they are... Taking it and running with it, then.
That's, yeah, that's to be determined, then.
Good, for a minute?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Wheaton?
My bad. Okay. No, we, we have been meeting, and it includes all our, the Municipal District of St. Stephen plus Eastern Charlotte, right? That whole region, and we have been meeting, and there's a report that has been prepared that's going, was supposed to be presented to the RSC on June 29th. Now, I don't know whether that happened or not. So I, I'll get more information on that. Okay.
Okay. So next up, Smart Energy Communities Accelerator. Oh. Oh, see, I thought you already touched on that, so sorry, CIO, information...
Well, it's the Community Safety Committee Discussion.
Worship.
All right. So as we want to start the discussion on community safety, and if, if there's anything you want to share first, or do we want to start discussing how we want to?
The, the report was drafted, and with the cons, hopefully with the concept of going step by step, to, and hopefully that the conversation would allow clarity developed enough that we can draft you the terms of reference for your end-of-the-month meeting for approval. So I think if you just go through the questions kind of one at a time, we, the conversation should flow, I hope.
So, oh, type of committee to be established? Ad hoc?
Or standing.
Or standing, yeah. Ad hoc or standing? Well, I just, so whatever people's thoughts on ad hoc? Is there any comments on that?
So who's the fastest?
What's the fastest? Sometimes it's not always the fastest, it gets you to the point you want to get to, because, because that's why you might want to have, to... Oh, yeah, that's what I mean, you might want to make sure you have the public involved in that committee. Anyway, Counsel Wright?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I was just going to say my, my initial, I guess, suggestion would be an ad hoc committee would be great, because hopefully this, out of this committee will come some permanent features that then don't have to have the committee overseeing, there'll be established, established procedures, or established maybe employees, whatever the case may be, whatever that comes out of that committee, because we can always create a standing committee later if needed. But ad hoc kind of gives, as it says in the, in the report, narrow in mandate with firm deliverables and deadlines, and I think it keeps things more organized, is my, my opinion for getting started, and then if it needs to be standing later, we can always do that. So that's just my comment on that.
All right, okay, any more thoughts on ad hoc? Is there any more that? Ad hoc, ad hoc? How are we doing over here to my left? Yeah? And, Counselor Greenlaw?
I'm just wondering if we want a narrow scope, because this is a broad topic, so are we going to go and solve one problem, or are we going to try to solve two or three, or try to impact two or three of the issues we're having now with this committee?
Well, my thoughts are just get that ad hoc committee together, and then, and then you have the people there, and you have the public in that meeting as well, help build it, I mean, and build that scope. Right? Oh, yeah, that's true, yeah. I think he's probably got that already. Yeah.
I appreciate the confidence, worship. I think, I think when we get down to item three, we may, once we just discuss that a little bit, we might want to, that might lead us to circle back to one, just to reconfirm the initial, the initial kind of intuitive position right now.
All right, so let's lead the, it seems like the, the ones ad hoc, so let's go down to the composition of the committee. Obviously, we've got municipal elected officials, police, local business, vulnerable sector service providers, and people experiencing or having previously experienced homelessness. Associated issues, mental health and addiction, et cetera. So, and then, hold, wait, okay, so, does that all make sense? Oh, okay, so, all right. Yeah, okay. Who would like to, I heard your voice first, Counsel Harding?
I bet you did. Thank you. Well, like, we got email this afternoon from someone who would like to have a wider scope on this, okay, who would like to include, I'm not quite sure, something about tourism or whatever, or business owners, or, you know the one I'm talking about. Yeah, so, anyway, I think that the Section AE has to be expanded. Thank you. Don't touch that, he's...
People experiencing that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, I had a, I had a lot of noise, okay, Counsel Rotis?
The other thing I'm wondering about is a bit of a screening process, because I know sometimes people are passionate at the moment, and they come on board, but I think we need to screen out people who are really dedicated to this topic, and not have too many of, you know, too many people representing business, or too many people representing the vulnerable sector. I think it needs to be like a more tight-knit, closed, balanced group, where there's not so many perspectives around the table that we get kind of lost in that, so I just, I love the composition layout of municipal elected officials, police, local business, vulnerable, vulnerable sector, people experiencing homelessness, and I do agree, it would be great to have some people who have housing, or, or landlords, but I, I just have a question about that, like, could we look at developing even a, a one-page screening process where people say why they want to join the committee, and their commitment, availability to this committee?
Okay, so, yeah, so if we do the ad hoc, if you look and read that, it does get established by council, right? So, should we have like a, you know, a, like a, I don't know, like a write-up of why you want to do it type thing, but I think actually, we actually talked a little bit about that, Jeff, before too, but, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Sure. Speaking to Counsel Rotis's concerns, as far as balance, one of the things that the Terms of Reference will do, will establish how many seats for each, it could be one seat representing each of these, two seats, whatever, whatever council ultimately feels comfortable with, that keeps, you know, hopefully keeps one, one sector from dominating the other sectors, keeping all personalities equal, which is not true, but, and the other thing, as far as recruitment, in the past, we have put like formal recruitment processes in place, once the Terms of Reference is established, we actually, you know, we advertise, just like we would for a, an employee position, and say, and, you know, there's usually a form saying, tell us, you know, it could be how long you lived here, because you might want some balance of newcomers and long-term residents, you know, so we, we try and create those criteria that we can bring back to council when we're doing those evaluations, and we're shortlisting and, and giving council the options for, for actually doing the appointments.
Counsel Rotis?
My other question would be, I would really, I don't know how everyone feels about this, but I would love to formally approach Kathy Bockus, now that she's the Minister of Seniors as well, and John Williamson, and just have their commitment and availability, if the committee gets to a point where they need to have provincial-related questions answered, or not necessarily a commitment to be involved in every committee, but just if they get to kind of a point where they're like, okay, we can't really move forward unless we have provincial buy-in, I do think we need somewhat of, of a commitment, and I'm saying that publicly, because we do need the support of all levels of government, so just to formally invite them to have them on board as being approachable when we need them, or when the committee gets to the point where they're looking for support.
And I believe that's very doable, actually, and if, if they, if they can attend, we had, we've done this before, they can send their EA, or in their, in their behalf, and record, and get back to them, and be our connection of that, but, okay, thank you. Jeff? Just go ahead, Counsel Cornish?
Yeah, I just want to find out, are we having a sit-down meeting with our MLA and MP in the very near future to go over what this is all about, because right now, we haven't talked to either one of them, but if we go into this next step without them actually having to sit down with us, understanding where we're coming from, I think we may lose a little bit of ground, so I would suggest that we have a meeting with them as soon as possible before we go to any ad hoc committee, before we understand, they understand what the situation is.
So I sort of started the process on that, on that, on the email this while ago, so anyways, but yes, rightfully so, and I'm struggle here. Jeff?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, so what I, I think what the, the plan for the Terms of Reference may be, in order to try and keep that spot for those representatives, is to have two seats at the table, being ex officio, but assigned specifically to the MLA's office and the MP's office. That way they can send their EA, they can send whomever from their offices available, they can attend themselves, and it keeps, you know, minutes would be sent out to those folks, and all, like, the constant communication feed would be there, one way or another. So I think that would be probably the most effective way to try and create that connection.
Counsel Harding?
Thank you, worship. I spoke to Kathy Bockus just before I came here tonight, and she's willing to do just about anything to set up a meeting, to set up a meeting with the minister, all you have to do is to get back to her, and she will do that, that's what she told me, so, just passing it on.
Well, that's a good start. Okay. All right, so we're... Did we get that ironed out? Yeah? Are you sure, Ken? Counselor Greenlaw, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering if the MLA is the right level of person, or their EA to have at the table? I'm thinking you want subject matter experts that are government officials, right, from those particular agencies that we need help with, like mental health and addiction, so I think that's what the ask needs to be, and, like, it's good to have the, the seats, and they be ex, ex officio, so that they can, you know, but I think if we need them there, we're trying to problem-solve, and we're trying to come up with, with viable solutions, I think you need some subject matter experts at, at the table. The MLAs are going to take it back, and it's going to get handed through three or four different, you know, offices before it actually gets where it needs to go, so I'm thinking you're going to save time, and it might be more efficient, and it just might be a little bit better, right? That's it for me.
Sure.
Just to, to worship, to, to Counsel Greenlaw, I'm just curious whether, if you're, you're, you're thinking, does item D need to be separated into two different levels when we do the Terms of Reference? Because we have vulnerable sector service providers, which government would be part of it, but do you, are you thinking that it might be advantageous to split that into...
NGO and...
Yeah. Okay. Okay, understood. Thank you.
But we probably would still have to go through Kathy, or Minister Bockus, to make that happen, but anyway. All right. Well... So do we, we don't have to pick a, any one tonight, we just got to...
This is just, so I can get it in my head, so I can draft it up for formal consideration at the end of the month.
So next, mandate of the committee. Any thoughts from counsel on the mandate of the committee? Deputy Mayor Wheaton?
At the last meeting, there was interest in Neighborhood Watch, so if the committee decided to do that, I'm just wondering if we could go ahead and start working on that before the committee gets together, because once you have the committee, it might take time, but I think Neighborhood Watch would be something that we could move right along with that before we, I mean, it's just, it's just, I mean, we don't require the committee to make a decision on that, but if we think that it's something worth doing in our community, I think that I'd like to see it move, move along.
All right, so my thoughts are, oh, sorry, Counsel, so who would manage that, I guess? Like, we'd have to at least, the board would have to figure that out, but unless we could figure it out, Counsel...
We could check with St. George and see how they went about it.
Okay. Counsel Wright?
I was just going to say that at the last, at the last board meeting, that was already, I guess, part of an action plan, and I believe the, Mr. Morton was going to initiate those conversations, and the Municipal District was going to, because it's not a Municipal District-led function, it is, it is community-led, citizen-led function, so I believe he was going to work on getting the partners together, and, and the Municipal District would maybe give the space to host it, facilitate it in any way we could, so that conversation could get started, so I think that was already an action plan that was going to be worked on before committee was developed, so if that gives any kind of, and, and Counseler Wheaton and I did attend the one hosted by our neighboring district, and it's very much citizen-led, and doesn't require counsel to, to have a committee to, to oversee that, so I think it's exciting to get started, and I'm looking forward to seeing, and they can also be facilitators of discussions for the community members regarding, you know, best practices for safeguarding your house or your property, and, and making citizens aware of little tools and tricks that can be used to help in challenging environments and situations, and, and so I think, I just think it's a great, a great thing, and I, I'm hoping that, from the action plan given on the last council meeting, that perhaps the next council meeting we'll actually have, have an update on that, hopefully.
All right, I mean, I know we're talking, talking tonight about building committee, but now we got to take action, or we want to take action on starting the Neighborhood Watch. All right. Are you certain, Ken? Counsel Rotis?
Was it Lisa Williams who gave the presentation? So could we, are you saying we could also look at, did you mean hosting the space to have those meetings, or could we also host her to have an information session, because it would be nice to have a local information session ASAP, just so we can get the buy-in, and a lot of people have accessibility issues, or may not have made it to St. George, but I have heard a lot of people in communities saying they wish they had been able to attend that presentation, so if we could even start there, we could do that ASAP, and then just build on that.
Well, we can definitely reach out to Lisa, for sure, and do that in the near future. All right, so that's part of it, how about the rest of it? Everyone, you know, eye through, hmm?
In, in full disclosure, much of this is borrowed from our, from our neighbors in the city of St. John, and their, their Community Safety Committee, modified to, they have a bit more resources available to them than we do, but, but that's kind of where I was working from, and I do think that the... But, but that's kind of where I was working from, and I do think that the, the layout works well as far as trying to touch on different elements that are, that are, we're facing right now. And as you say, building, building resident resilience, that's some of that education training stuff you were just discussing. Ensuring safe spaces, that's, you can, you know, that's a broad term, but you know, you can look at lighting, cameras, you know, those kind of things in there. Preventing and reducing crime, obviously a huge concern for us right now. As worship and I were, spent the hour before this meeting with Sergeant McKenzie, having a discussion around those types of topics as well. So I think, you know, working from someone who's been doing this a little bit longer than we have is a good starting point. And as you noticed in part eight, put in there the ability to bring recommendations for changing the terms of reference or changing the mandate back to counsel as, as situations develop and with, you know, hopefully things get done and things get accomplished, then you know, you drop one off and you add one, or whatever, whatever the committee is dealing with at the time. So they can come back and get a new mandate or a modified mandate directly from counsel as they need.
Counsel Heissler?
Number seven there says identify gaps in local service resources. Depending on the Unsheltered Committee, they could liaise with that committee, probably? Would that be, that be more appropriate than that? But I guess we, we won't know that until further down the road, but.
Then we all have to take it on.
Yeah, that way they wouldn't have to take that on themselves, that they just liaise with the Unsheltered Committee for their feedback on it, right?
Yeah, right. I mean, well, that, I mean, once we get this board together, I mean, they can start, they should be having meetings with those people as well, all the, all the service people in the community as well. Yeah, I, I think it's going to, unless we miss something, or St. John missed something? Jeff, you go ahead.
So as I suggested earlier, now you've kind of gone through the, this mandate, which is relatively broad in its, but I mean, I think it's good in the sense that it gives the committee membership room to maneuver. If you narrow them in too much, then they don't, they can't get creative and they can't, they might be hitting barriers. It just, it might be, like, it might be appropriate to circle back and make sure that the ad hoc style is still matching up with the mandate that it looks like that you're, you're in favor of providing the committee. And if everybody's comfortable, I mean, I don't have a problem with where you're at right now, to be perfectly honest with you, but like I said, I thought it was a good chance to revisit that first conversation now that you've kind of walked through the mandate a little bit.
Any further comments from that comment? Does that change anyone's thoughts? Counsel Heissler?
So what do you feel like would be the, like, I mean, you're more experienced in these kind of, like, I mean, is that, is that wide enough or is that narrow enough to have, be an ad hoc committee with all those things that you just did on the eight different sectors? Is that narrow enough to be an ad hoc committee, or do you need a little bit standing committee? That's, you, there's quite a few things in that, eight different things, so it's not very narrow, so, and that's ad hoc committee saying a narrow vision or narrow mandate or?
Counsel Wright?
I see both sides of it, what you're saying, Counselor, as well. But again, there's, because it has a timeline, an ad hoc committee, and again, this is my perspective, I'm just offering what I'm looking at, an ad hoc committee, just because it has a short ti, a set timeframe, doesn't mean it has to be a very short timeframe. It could be an ad hoc committee that's in place for a year, two years, for the duration of this counsel's term. So, and again, from my perspective, again, only, is that it doesn't negate the opportunity for counsel to develop another standing committee in the future if workload gets to be too much, but that's, again, just one perspective. So certainly, I'm, if it, it looks like it'd be better suited to, to a standing committee, I'm, I'm all for whatever's going to work. May I ask our CAO, you said you borrowed from the city of St. John, there's no point in reinventing the wheel, agree that wholeheartedly? May I ask you to confirm what kind of committee they have established? Is it standing or ad hoc?
Through your worship, I believe it is standing, but it, from the brief little bit of digging around I did on it, it looks like it's fairly well-reserved as well at this particular point in time. We may, I think you articulated very well, the ability to transition from one to the other. It may be that the ad hoc committee, one of the first tasks in the ad hoc terms of reference, is just to simply get some of the plan, some of the, here's how we would lay this out and get that back to counsel on a short timeline, because that may indicate to counsel two things, and the length of the duration that will be required, and the, whether or not the delegation of authorities it may be required. And that's probably the biggest thing. As far as the narrow or wide scope, yeah, normally ad hocks have narrow scope, they don't have to. But you don't delegate authority via bylaw from counsel to an ad hoc, you do that to a standing committee. It's still something that's under the control, more, more so under the control of counsel. And so if you do want to say, yeah, you don't have to come back to counsel to ask for, you know, XYZ, that's when you'd want to transition to a standing committee, and we'd probably revisit the composition maybe a little bit, but at that time. But that's, to me, that's the biggest thing, is if you're going to delegate authority, it really has to be a standing committee.
Yeah, okay, I'm thinking, I mean, a standing could still do the same role, reporting generally. Yeah? That's on me, though, I'll try to see the rest of you. Counsel Harding?
Thank you, your worship. So this is going to be, I'm going to address this to you, CAO, this is going to be a committee of counsel, correct? Because the other, the Unsheltered Group is not ever been a committee of counsel. Am I correct?
You are absolutely correct.
Yes, because they have to report to counsel, in the standing one, too, as well, so. Okay. Any more comments on what are we hearing? Still ad hoc, standing? I'm not, I don't really have a read. Counsel Rotis?
I would say, I think ad hoc's just fine, and I'm, I'm more concerned about how quickly we can get this group going, like, that, I guess that would be my focus, is how quickly can we get some of these applications in and kind of, I think it would really put the community at ease if we kind of had a timeline around that. But at this, when I read this, you know, standing committees are good for long-term issues, and I don't see this issue going away. I mean, that's the truth, like, there's a lot of different factors at play here, so I am kind of back and forth. I'm.
Yeah, I just want to tail on that, though. I, I think the standing would help continue that role and carry it longevity, because, yeah, good word. So, because it is going to be, it may, it may be fluid and change, but you can't let them, you know, have it just stop, like, because it's not going to, it could come back or whatever. Counsel Wright?
I was just going to want, say one thing, that the way the committees are established, definitely it would be probably simpler and faster for the, for the application process to come through, and then it all just hinges on you, everybody can blame the mayor. No, I'm, I'm just kidding you, but that, that is a faster way, because otherwise, all the things have to come back to counsel to vet and go through. So if we're looking at getting it done faster, standing is definitely the way to go. So there's, there's pros and cons to both, and, and I, I could be in agreement with either. Thank you.
So on that, though, would there be terms for, you know, would we rotate people in and out?
Sure, your worship, absolutely, term limits or, or could be, could be established in the terms of reference, that's not a problem. Counsel Wright beat me to it, because I was going to, I was going to circle back to the fact that not so much the, necessarily the appointment of the individuals, because that may still be very valuable to, for the mayor to defer to the entirety of counsel. But because under our procedural bylaw, you have the authority to establish the committee, there would be no real reason to necessarily have to wait the, the full two weeks to get the committee established and, you know, advertising out for interested individuals, that kind of stuff going, because you could do that under your mayor's authority. And then, I mean, potentially, in, at the end of the month, counsel could be focused on appointing individuals rather than worrying about the minutia of the terms of reference, which you would have the authority to approve tomorrow if I, if I had a full document drafted for you to look at, which isn't going to be the case.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I mean, I've already got a few people in mind, I mean, I've already talked to them, like, you know, so it'd be nice to have them come in and tell, tell me what, what they want to do, or if they even want to be part of it, but. All right, so it's looking like standing?
If I may, your worship, and the, and the last point in here is, is just the administrative support, and, you know, it's, yeah, it's my duty to, to assign whatever you need to get the job done. The, kind of the question is, what do we perceive the need to be? If it's just a administrative assistant to help with agenda creation, do minutes, distribute minutes, that's one thing. If we're getting into more, more demands for, you know, resources, that becomes more challenging, you know, as we've discussed, we have capacity issues from time to time. But my, my thinking is that, or my suggestion may be in the early going, it may simply be that admin support, if we pick the right chairs to lead the process, and it's just a matter of having someone that helps with the admin side in the initial go. Obviously, all the department heads would be available, you know, on a request to come in and, and work with the, the committee as, as required. But just wanted to confirm that that understanding would work on your folks' end, at least until we get the lay of the land and figure out exactly what we have.
I agree, we got to get it started to get it, to get it started. It's as simple as that, we got to, we got to get the ball rolling. Okay. So everyone good? All right. Thank you. Okay, next up, Smart Energy Communities Accelerator.
Thank you, your worship. So probably all of you here wondering what this even is, this is, this is a program that we started in 2020. Myself, Kev, there was a few other. Deputy Mayor Wheaton was with us, I believe, for the first stretch there, we, there was a whole group of them, actually, Alex Henderson, Kendall at the time, and Future St. Stephen was sitting around the table. The program, the idea, this program is, comes from Quest Canada, which is a program that started in '07. They, they work throughout Canada on smart energy accelerator programs and how we can get better at dropping our greenhouse gas emissions, which we have a plan from 2015 to 2030 to be a big reduction, right? So these are the steps we've worked with, partnered with these group, this group to go through. They're a na, a national nonprofit that supports pathways to net zero. That's the goal here, is to, is to try to get us through it. We actually did quite well. We did it, right at the beginning, we had a, we had many meetings, lots and lots of meetings, and we, the, the process you have to go through is to identify what our big issues would be. And then, and we've been working on it since 2021, 2022, and we've gone from 40% efficiency to almost 66% just in the three years that we started. And when, these are just little changes, we were doing, you know, Civic Center, we changed, we were starting to move everything LEDs, all, if you noticed, all the parks, all the lights that we've put up in the parks have all been swapped to LEDs. And it's the little things, like, the, the truck is a, is a hybrid truck, right? All those little things have a measuring indicator to them. So this program, they gave us the tools to try to work through what, you know, what, what we can do to get to where we need to be in 2030. There was 13 communities in the province of New Brunswick, we were one of them, and one First Nations, I believe, St. Mary's, actually, St. Andrews has done it, they've done the same program. And as we went through the, like I said, we went through all the stuff, the indicators, if you look through your report, actually, the summary is, is there, it's in part of your package. You'll see different things that we've, we've worked our way through with the timelines. The next, the next step for us to get to the third milestone, I guess you could call it, is the CEP programs. We got to come up with a community efficiency program, basically, and what our plan is moving forward. That being said, it's a pretty in-depth program, and we all kind of worked together on it, myself, Kev, and Sean, but we, it's bigger than, to actually roll this program out, we've, we've basically got to have some more resource, I think, and I don't want to talk about committees here with, with, because we're, we're hard, are you doing that, right? So eventually, we'll have to work our way towards that. You know, we've done quite a bit with the indicators on our own, like myself, I attend meetings every month with all, most of Canada, that we're all together, there's 88, 88 of us that, that meet once a month, and we do a program. And we're just bouncing ideas and what other, what other people are doing, what we're doing, what we're doing good. The flagship, for us, what anchored our, our town was the, this facility being built the way it was built in 2012 or whatever it was built, right? We have energy, energy-efficient ice plants, we have all those things, got us from 20% to 40% after we recognized it and get all, all our packages together, and then we moved forward. We got a long ways to go, and I'm starting to build our, well, I'm going to start building the plan soon, but it's going to take more than myself to do it, it's quite, it's quite in-depth. Anyway, there's, there's lots of indicators, and you can go through your package if any questions. One of the, one of the, there's 11 total indicators that we, we look at, govern, like, we started in 2021, governance is one of them, we went, in 2021, score was 48%, this is, now we're at 66%. And the key changes were, we, our strat alignment with MB Power, with other energy users, and the, and the next step for us to keep moving is the staff capacity. We went from 41% to 73% because it was engagement, like, we didn't, we didn't really have engagement, and some of us were put in engagement, to be engaged at the end of the day. So, and I've actually taken it on, and it's, it's a pretty good project, and I, you know, as we move forward, we got a lot, a lot of stuff we got to change, indicators are buildings, land use, like, what can we do better up in, at the industrial park, like, what can we do up there? Can we share energy up there? Like, there's all kinds of programs, and yes, it takes time to go through that, and you have to work, you have to have your community partners, you have to have all those things together to, to work, right? It's not just does. And there's lots to it, like, there's, you know, mailouts, and there's things to, you know, MB Power does it now with the energy kits, right? So that's a key tool that we can use and go to some, at some point. But anyway, that's, that's what the program, and it's ongoing right now continually. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Counsel Wright?
Thank you, I have just a couple of questions, because I wasn't around when this started. So was this something that we were approached to be a volunteer? Was it something that, that counsel did? And the second, I'll, I'll save my second question for after you answer that, because otherwise you might forget.
Yeah, so we were approached along with, as Mr. McShane was saying, some, several communities in New Brunswick, basically when the governor of New Brunswick signed on to Quest, Quest program as a, as a funding agency, on the front page you'll see some big money people that put a lot of money behind this. We got, what'd you say, it was two years already where the consulting work? For, for $1,500. And that's a team of professionals, you know, working alongside our staff, and so it was, it, it's been great, and, but we had, we were approached as a, as a pilot project, because they thought we had potential to, to get better in our energy, and as Jeremy indicated, even the early going, we definitely had some low-hanging fruit we could get after, so.
That would be in all those energy audits and stuff that you were doing too, right? Yeah, yeah. Oh, go ahead, Counsel Wright, again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. On page 18 of 23 at the bottom, it says the CEP action planning timeline, and it says, based on the workshop, the town prioritized, prioritize the following measures and assign them to a lead, as well as identified whether studies, funding, or supporting policies were needed. And then the next page shows the, I guess, like, a curving road with, with some steps to get there, and at the bottom was what caught my eye, develop a bylaw to require connection to District 8. Can you just elaborate what, what that is, I guess?
It's on page 19.
It's on page 19.
Yes? No, it's 18 of 23 of your agenda.
Oh, 19 and 23 of the agenda, my apologies.
I figured it out, why our numbers weren't matching up.
Yes, page nine, I think, of the report, yes, I'm looking at the wrong. Yeah, it's kind of got a winding curve, and it's the very bottom green bar, and that's just what caught my eye. I was reading through the package the other night in preparation for meeting.
Yeah, so that, I mean, because it's, it's under the other category, it's not even a prioritized item, it, but it is something that many communities are doing, you know, like, when, if, if you build a district heating service, right? Then you pass a bylaw saying thou shalt connect.
Kind of what M B Power does. Sorry, it's kind of like M B Power does right now, you have to be connected kind of deal, okay? All right, so that, that's, it just caught my eye, and I'd never seen that in wording before, so I just wanted, I was just curious, like I said, it caught my eye, thank you, I appreciate it.
Counsel Greenlaw?
Yeah, a couple of quick things, I noticed there's a lot of, you know, the terms, the engineering terms are in there, and feasibility studies and stuff like that. So you said we got a whole bunch of engineering for 1,500 bucks, right? So going down the road, is that funding still there, are we going to be looked at, when, you know, when they talk about maybe heat recovery or something in a particular spot, are we going to have to do the feasibility study ourselves, or is that?
Yeah, so basically what the plan was, they actually just got extended, COA just extended them again for another, until 2025, I believe, our last meeting, they brought it up. We still have their, their support as we move through, like, we've been, I emailed them today for a tool, and they just sent, they just send packages. So we're working with them all the time. And as I start building the C E P, well, they're, they're all, they're all right there at the, you know, email, if I need them, so. And they're templates, they've sent me templates, we know, we've got a good path, I think, like this indicates here, just a matter of getting there.
Yeah, so the support's still staying so good, so the commitment, now that we've committed to this, if we don't keep up, like, you know, it looks like they're, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to blacklist you or anything like that, but, but, you know, if things, you know, if we look at things and say, you know, really, this isn't, this isn't worth us doing, we're not going to get the return on investment on this, what's our commitment to this, like, as far as, as now that we're in it?
So that's a good one, because our commitment version versus city of St. John, we did, they're the same programs, are different needs, like we had discussed earlier about the committee. St. Andrews is completely different, again, like, their, their packages and their final summaries completely different than ours, right? Because their needs are different, right? Moving down the road, this is, this is our, kind of our, our path to get to net zero, you know, and this is, this is, it's laid out for us now, and I, I think our commitment to it will be follow our steps and get, and build our program, like, build our, our plan, which we have started, and then we are, like I said, we're also part of another program, that's, energy, it was Energy Protection Plan that we're part of, and we have, there's five milestones, and we're at two right now. And the third one is that, comes after we write, you know, get our plans together, and then we can keep, keep moving. And as you do that, it also opens up funding possibilities for us, right? Like, to move, you know, different retrofits, different, you know, programs, you know, we could, we could look, and, but they like seeing those, those milestones, right? Like, they want to see that you're actually putting the time and, and committing to it, right?
Yeah, that's our K P I's, you're looking for, for progress, I just want to make sure that we're not going to get held to something we don't want to do, and that's, yeah.
As Mr. McShane said, it's, it's customizable to every community. Our, the reason we went into this from day one was saving taxpayer money on energy, as Jeremy said, mainly in the building we're currently sitting in, because we knew, oh, I think COVID actually opened our eyes a lot to the energy that was being consumed by this building, because essentially we shut this building down, and we saw what happened to our M B Power bills and everything else. And we started, and then we had to fire it back up, and we went, whoa, boy, okay. We saw how much room there was there, and we were trying to find the best way to save the taxpayer a dollar on the lights, on anything else. So unless council give this direction at some point to do otherwise, our plan is to stick to what's going to save our taxpayers dollars, what's, like, yes, active transportation on, on King Street, they, they mentioned, might be a nice to have, next time we do King Street or something, great, we'll look at that down the road. But if they're going to say you can save 30% on your power bills in the, in, on the cubes in the, in the back of the St. Greg's Ice, that's going to be our priority. It might not be St. Andrews' priority, but it will be ours, and that's totally, you know, the Quest is fine with that, they just want to see that you're committed to it, and you're, and they know if you, if you're getting the wins you want, you're going to stay with the program, and, and they're going to help you get there.
Yeah, so in, in the other thing that I was, you know, like, I mean, this is, like you say, it's customizable. So when you look at planning, zoning, building codes, you know, whatever stuff like that, you can force, you know, super energy efficient, you can force solar and all this, that's not in, in the, no, okay, we're good.
Deputy Mayor?
Okay, this is just a small thing, but if you look back on page 19, something that was high priority was the anti-idling education campaign targeted at school drop-off. I mean, that's something simple, but it does save a lot of energy. And, and also, we, we have a responsibility for educating our society, too, on, you know, on saving energy. And like, the, the Family Resource Center was passing out kits, like, for changing lights and, and everything, and it does make, make a big difference. So I think it's good, we need to go that way.
Oh, you got some more to add, Jeremy? Go ahead.
That's a great point, because how I break it down is in two parts, right? We're, we're, we have to be sustainable and responsible as, as what we own, our assets, like, our assets, the municipal assets. The second part of that is the, the community, right? Like, how do you, how do you reach out and bring them on board, and different things we can do, right? And that, and that's, I, this is just one summary, but if you need any more stuff, let me know, I've got all kinds of more stuff from these guys that, that give you other ideas, and, and mailouts, you know, or, or going, you know, just making them, like you said, the anti-idling, and that's a very simple thing. Now, you know, little things like that, and the active transportation was the other one that, you know, you start, now, that is, again, a resource that's a little different here than would be in St. John, right? Like, on the hop-on bus in St. Andrews, right? That, that's a great program, but doesn't work here, right? So those are the things we have to, what I have to, we have to identify through, and then work our way to whatever works best, I guess.
And when we talk about working with the public, it's also industry, like, our big major industry as well, which, you know, which have lots of heat sometimes, which could be repurposed or, yeah, yes, it is, yeah. I'm just making sure someone that not, not read the report would hear that, so. Okay. Any more questions, comments? Counsel Rotis?
I'd just like to thank you guys, because that's a, sorry, Earl, I, yeah, it is, I do, I do just want to say thank you, because that's an incredible amount of work and commitment to be on those meetings with 80 other people, so I think it's excellent, and you've done a great job, and just thank you, it's a lot of work, and I can't even imagine how much money we saved with those light bulbs alone. Maybe you have a number, do you have a number you can share? Got to guess?
No.
Good answer.
Earl, I don't know why I'm yelling, you probably hear better than anyone, go ahead.
So if I understand this right, the only thing that this has crossed in us as the town is just manpower, right?
That'd be correct, Counsel.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, I think this is a good plan.
Thanks, Earl, and sorry about forgetting you out there in the world, there, wherever you are. All right.
I'm in Barry.
Where?
Barry, Ontario.
Okay, any more comments? All right. Mover and second it to a adjournment.
I shall move her.
I'm going to take it. Are you going to second it? Okay.
Yeah, she's the O G L.
Counsel Harding and Counsel Rotis. Thank you.